The next item we have is an update of the Potomac Yard Entertainment District. And I think we have some staff joining us. And I think tonight, we want to just do a couple highlights related to some small business, related to housing, a little bit on transportation, although there's some large-scale discussion that's going to occur shortly on that. And I think also explain a little bit about some next steps, as well as the update of what happened at the legislature today. So we have with us our Economic Development Partnership CEO and Executive Director Stephanie Landrum. She's going to lead you through it, and I'll be happy to join in. And we've got some people online as well to assist.
Thank you. Good evening, and happy to be here to give you all an update on this project. So we'll start, as the city manager said, with the general assembly update. On January 19th, there were two bills filed to create the Sports and Entertainment Authority, which would allow for this project to move forward in Alexandria. It outlined how this project would be financed and how the real estate portions of this deal work. Following their filing, they went to the House and to the Senate, and a substitute bill was presented in the House last Friday, and it passed 17 to 3. And then today, the full House voted in a 59-40 vote to send it forward. The bill that was filed in the Senate was referred to a committee, and it was not taken up. And so what that means is that the House bill, which was passed today, now crosses over and will be considered by the Senate moving forward as the session continues. What happens during crossover is that lots of changes might be made. And so our protocol, as we do with many things that we track or are interested in at the state level, is that we will continue to meet and follow what happens during those meetings and sessions to make sure that any bill that does move forward is aligned with our interests. So that is what is happening in the Richmond portion of this project. Since we last met, we have been actively engaged in a variety of different engagement activities. So our website, MonumentalALX.com, is the singular place where you can go and see any new announcements about meetings or ways to find more information. We launched after our last meeting an online question and comment form. We are receiving a very healthy number of requests and questions. So far, we have posted and answered 174 questions. We have another batch that is going to be going up very, very soon. And our goal is to take every question that has been asked and make sure that it is then published and answered on that website. We started a pop-up series. We've held one event. We did four listening sessions, which I'll go a little bit more into detail about. You all, as a council, held a town hall on the 27th, and we have had 15 community meetings so far, with more than 20 additional scheduled. We have done every format imaginable. We did a session in Spanish last week. And so we, I think, are fully engaging in the council's direction to us to engage as much and as often as possible with anyone who would like to learn more about the project. So let's talk a little bit about the listening sessions. We did four on four specific topics. They were held the last four Thursday nights. We started with the finance, and then did schools and housing and community benefit. We unveiled the state's initial transportation analysis. And then last week, we did small business and economic opportunity. All of the sessions are recorded and are available up on the website. So since our last briefing, the last three took place. And as you'll remember, when we did our last briefing, we shared with you kind of the outcome of the financial listening session. We let you ask a number of questions. And so tonight, we wanted to bring forward three of the speakers from the last three sessions to give you some of the highlights from those events. So here's the full list of those three sessions of who participated. The first, which was focused on community housing and schools, included a mix of Alexandria and school staff, as well as our partners. And so you'll see here, today, we're bringing forward A.J. Jackson with JBG Smith to talk about housing. The second session, which was transportation, again, included a mix of Alexandria and state partners. And so Nick Donahue, who is the special advisor to the Commonwealth, is going to be here tonight to talk a little bit about some highlights from that session. And then last week's session, which was around small business opportunity and economic opportunity, we have Jackie Samarco from JBG Smith, who's going to talk about how JBG Smith is looking at retail opportunities and small business opportunities in the project. So I'm going to hand it over to A.J. for a couple of slides here.
Thank you, Stephanie, and good evening, council. So as you may know, we're really excited about the housing component of this opportunity. Both Alexandria and the broader region need to increase housing supply, and the Monumental Arena unlocks the opportunity to produce more than 5,000 units of housing on-site within Potomac Yards, which is very exciting, in addition to unlocking approximately $25 million in contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund and the school site, Free and Clear, which could hold another 100 to 150 affordable housing units. Once complete, the project generates, and Stephanie will correct me on the number, but approximately $30 million in additional meals tax revenue. This is beyond the Affordable Housing Fund contribution. That's additional housing resource for the city. So we're excited about those housing components. But at the same time, I think, as a lot of folks in Alexandria are aware, we've been focused on at JBG, the impact and the need to preserve housing affordability in advance of development. We launched something called the Washman Housing Initiative a few years ago, and in 2020, partnered with the City of Alexandria to help Alexandria housing acquire and preserve the Parkstone Building, which is a 323-unit building, where we were able to set aside 75% of the units as affordable without displacing any existing residents. And so we've made a commitment to use the tools that we have at our disposal, including a fund that we've raised of approximately $115 million, to work with the city once again to preserve at least 500 additional units of housing in advance of the development. So this is something that we can start, we've been talking with Helen and the housing staff already, and something we can start with the city as soon as the legislation is enacted to allow us to get ahead of the development on-site and preserve affordability in the community with a specific focus in the Arlandria area in advance of the development and the pressures that may come from development. So we're really excited to be partnering with the city again, and excited about the housing potential, both on-site in terms of new housing, but also the opportunity to do some more focused preservation within the city to try to preserve affordability for residents in advance of the development. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, A.J. Jackie, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, everyone. It's great to meet you. I'm Jackie Samarco, and I'm the director of retail leasing for mixed-use properties throughout Northern Virginia and Washington, D.C. I'm very grateful to be here tonight, and I wanted to start by just reiterating how important it is that placemaking is at the core of our strategy at JBG Smith, really and truly in everything that we do. It's one of our foundational pillars, and it really helps guide us as we merchandise new projects. In our eyes, successful placemaking is really enhancing the value of the community while preserving the local culture, while some other landlords do things differently. I think that is something that sets us apart. And as we continue to be a development partner for this arena and develop the neighborhood with Monumental, the State of Virginia, and the City of Alexandria, and our other partners, we would apply these same principles to govern our approach surrounding the arena. In doing so, we intentionally choose retail that complements what already exists and solve for what is not there, and the component of that being small businesses. We really and truly believe that having a diverse mix of operators is what is key to a successful neighborhood, and it's about finding the right balance. So we want to preserve some of the national chains that are there while also bringing in small businesses. And earlier, you had mentioned the small businesses counseled by the Alexandria Economic Development Partnership. And I think that that is a great pillar for transitioning groups counseled by them to us at JBG Smith, so that we can consult with them and speak with them about retail opportunities and really create a great working relationship to funnel businesses that are learning and going through those introductory processes to our retail opportunities at the arena. We can go to the next slide. Great. One of our most recent case studies is the Water Park, which delivered in October of last year, and highlights one example of how we look for creative and diverse ways to bring locally-owned, minority-owned, and women-owned businesses to the area. As most of you may know, it is very challenging to be a small business in the area that we live in. And one way that we've been able to enable the success of these small businesses is by eliminating those upfront hurdles and costs to get open. So what we did at the Water Park is we delivered nine turnkey kiosks, fully equipped with the equipment needed to run a restaurant, and we were able to lease to 100% local and 80% minority and women-owned businesses. And we really feel that by having a diverse group of operators, we're able to preserve authenticity, that is, national landing, and stay true to future residents while also catering to the needs of the community as it changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Turn it over to Nick. Before Nick starts, I also wanted to acknowledge that we do have our Director of Transportation, Adriana Costaneda, and Brian Knight, who is a division chief here, as well as Hillary Orr. So we are fully represented for transportation. As we turn it over to Nick, though, I'll just stress that Nick is presenting an analysis and information that was prepared by the Commonwealth. And so our team, as well as our community, is still in the process of digesting what has been presented and prepared by the Commonwealth. Nick, over to you.
Well, thanks, Stephanie, and thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the opportunity to be with you here tonight. Stephanie's asked me to talk a little bit this evening about the analysis that Kimley-Horn conducted for the Commonwealth, looking at the traffic, potential traffic impacts of the arena. What we looked at and examined in this analysis were, what are the unique traffic impacts of the arena relative to the other previously approved development plans in this area? And so we analyzed that and studied that, and the big takeaway is that there were additional peak trips, at like kind of five to six hours, so in that peak of the peak time. And so the analysis then looked at and identified a number of improvements, both transit, multimodal, and roadway improvements, and then looked at how would traffic perform at the peak of the peak with those set of improvements. What we found is that travel times are essentially and substantially the same with these proposed improvements in the arena as they otherwise would be with the otherwise previously approved kind of by right development. And I'm going to kind of talk through what those improvements are in the next few slides, but I wanted also just like see if we could just stay on that one slide there, sorry. You do see the cost figures here for these. These are, you know, healthy and substantial investments that will take place to facilitate some of this additional travel, both in the transit and roadway side from the arena proposal. It's the Commonwealth's intent to memorialize its commitment for this funding through a memorandum of agreement similar to what was used on the Amazon HQ2 process, which the city was a part to, and I was a part of back in 2018 when I worked for the previous administration. So you can see there are some ongoing operating costs, as well as about, give or take, $200 million in capital costs. So moving on to the next slide, let's talk about what are some of the specific improvements that we're looking at. And so on the multimodal side, we're really looking at the opportunities to maximize the benefits of a lot of the existing infrastructure there and make it easier and more convenient for folks to utilize that. And core to that strategy is the new Potomac Yard Metro Rail Station. When I worked at the state, we actually partnered with the City of Alexandria to help advance that station, and that was one of the Amazon HQ2 projects as well. And the intent at that time was really to put that here to help support the locally-approved small-area plan with a lot of the new mixed-use and higher-density development. So that station there is key to how we plan to do this, and there's a number of upgrades that are necessary to that station, both from a service standpoint, but also from a capital standpoint. And so the key improvements that we're looking at are, how can we help people get into that station more easily? So escalators, fair gate, the bridge over the railroad tracks. And then, once they're in the station, there's going to be a need, particularly post-game, on game nights, excuse me, to run additional trains during the kind of hour or so after the game, to help all of those people who have now entered that station to get out. There's also funding that is contemplated for increased metroway and dash service, as well as improvements to make it as easy as possible if you bike or take a scooter to that station to handle parking once you've gotten to the arena. And so those are really some of the main improvements that you'll see on the multimodal side. And with that, we believe we can achieve kind of a mode share of upwards of 50% or greater of folks coming to the arena for games by basically a mode that is not driving. On the next slide, I do want to talk a little bit, though, about what are some of the roadway improvements. And so as I mentioned there, we do anticipate that because of the changes in the proposed development from the arena compared to the previously approved growth, there will be additional vehicles on the roadway during the rush hour period. Luckily, they're not all heading in the same direction at the same time, and so there are folks coming from the north. A little over half the traffic would be heading south on Route 1. There will be folks heading on South Glebe Road from 395 towards Potomac Yard, and then also people coming up from the south. And so on the roadway side, there's a package of improvements, about nine intersections along Route 1, things like Slater's Lane and Route 1, and then also a number of intersection improvements proposed to South Glebe Road, including Arlington Ridge Road. And those improvements collectively range from about $100 to $145 million. And with those, again, we believe the travel times on the roadway will be substantially similar to what they otherwise would be with the improved growth that has been contemplated. And so the next slide. And so, you know, this is the beginning of a discussion on these transportation improvements. You know, with any improvement, if it were to move forward, those would all go through the public involvement process. There would be a continued engagement with the community. But before we even get to that stage, as Stephanie mentioned, we are engaging with the city staff, with Arlington County staff, and with others there to talk about the findings in the Kimley-Horn analysis, and look forward to having, you know, ongoing and continued discussions to that end. And Stephanie, I'll hand it back to you.
Great. Thank you, Nick. So again, for clarity, we're announcing tonight that we will be holding a community conversation specifically on transportation, where Nick and representatives from the Commonwealth and Kimley-Horn will be available to answer questions about how they prepared the analysis and recommendations that were made. Again, our staff is continuously, or continuously has begun to go through this information, as well as it has been made available to us. So this is, again, breaking news tonight. This event will be next Thursday. We're going to be holding it in a virtual setting, but we'll allow people to ask questions in real time. Couple more slides. Want to talk a little bit about the economic and fiscal impact analysis. This has been the foundation on which our team and the Commonwealth team analyzed whether or not this opportunity made sense to pursue, and it is how we have structured the financing deal. And so as you all know, when we announced the deal shortly thereafter, we released the summary of what's called the HRNA report, and that has been up available to the public since December 22nd. We have said continuously that we are working to provide more of that detail to the public and interested parties, but also recognizing that it is based on a variety of different proprietary sets of information that were provided through this process by Monumental Sports, but also through landowner and development entities. During the time when we have not been able to provide more detail, we have tried to find other ways to help people understand what's in the report and what it means. And so we provided an explanation video that Davenport and our city's finance director shot back in December. And then we also did a full listening session back in January and have been answering specific questions related to the finances for the weeks that have come. Later this week, we will be able to share a more extensive version of the HRNA report. And so we're excited that we have worked through those issues of proprietary information, and we'll be releasing that later this week. And then finally, I'll end with two upcoming events. We've already talked about the transportation community conversation, but next week, we will also be doing another pop-up event at William Ramsey. It's at a different time of day than our first event, but again, will be held at a city facility. And this is an opportunity for people who are using the facility, who might not have heard about the project or have questions, to ask those and to also provide information, comments, and questions that can be answered at a later time if needed. So with that, that ends our update, but our speakers are available for questions, as am I and the city manager.
Okay. We're going to go to questions now from colleagues. Vice Mayor Jackson is first, and then Councilwoman Gaskins, and then Councilmember Pike.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, the update. Just a quick question. There was a pop-up on Sunday that was canceled. These are weekday events, the two that I just saw posted, correct? Are you going to make sure that there are weekend hours and pop-ups for our residents and businesses to hear from you?
Yeah, our first one at Chick Armstrong was on a weekend. And if, as the process continues, we'll continue to add opportunities at night, at morning, times of day, weekends, weekdays. We're still working through opportunities to do that.
Thank you.
We do have, I believe it's two others that are already scheduled and are on the MonumentalALX.com website. I was just going to pull it up. I don't remember exactly what time they are right now.
So when we're looking at those, I understand that some of these are rec. centers, so they're city property. So the one on Sunday was not. So, and I don't have that list in front of me, but I'm hoping that you, if it's another property other than city property, that you'll make sure that it's still a go. Okay, thank you. That's all.
We'll be doing pop-ups on city facilities.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Gaskins, then Councilmember Pike.
Thank you. More just a couple of comments and reactions. So the first related to housing, it was helpful to hear the focus on both production and preservation, but also the understanding that there needs to be significant units on-site. I just want to make sure that, you know, it's very clear from the beginning that, as we think about this, if this moves forward, we're essentially creating a new neighborhood. And I just want to be very clear that, for me, my expectation would be that there's a diversity in terms of AMI levels. We've received several letters, particularly from, I think, tenants and workers and other groups that have really talked about the need for housing at 40% AMI. So I want to make sure that we're leveraging what tools we have to be able to get that. I also know that we've received some emails and comments related to, in a lot of our projects, we don't always get a diverse unit mix. You know, it's easier to get the ones in two bedrooms, but also thinking about the three bedrooms and the opportunities for families. So I wanted to put that out there. The second was related to small business. Two thoughts. One, and this may be later on for guidance from the city attorney, but really thinking about if this moves forward and we think about community benefit agreements, how do we have some clear targets for what we want to see in terms of minority and women-owned businesses, and making sure that there are targets we could hold our partners accountable to for delivering that. Also, I think sometimes when we think about small business, we focus hyper on the restaurant and retail. But I think one of the exciting things about the small-area plan is, this was called to be an innovation district. And so how are we thinking about what are the different types of supports creative industries might need, and what are the incentives and supports they would need to be able to stay open? So just also thinking about different levels of small business strategy. The next comment, I look forward to the deeper dive on transportation. I think for me, two questions that I would hope would be answered in the webinar. One is, right now, I feel like we continue to see slides that are like a list of ideas, like lots of different ideas, but it's not always clear how the ideas fit together. And so if there's some point of that presentation that could speak to, you know, how do all of these things weave into the transportation network we would need to see? Along with that, the second part that would be helpful to understand is kind of timing. You know, everything that's being presented is on a very quick pace. What would need to be in place day one for this actually to be successful? And if some of these major infrastructure projects would not be, then like what are the mitigation plans, or what are the timelines we'd be setting forth to make sure they're coming? So I don't need an answer now, but on the webinar, that's what I will be tuning in to look at. And then, just a follow-up question. When we did the questions or reactions to the financing information, there were a couple things we had asked for. One was kind of a breakdown on what we could expect in terms of meals tax, ticket admissions, all those different pieces. Will that be in the updated report?
Yes.
Okay. The second thing was kind of a breakdown on the different factors that went into the analysis. Will that also be?
As much of it, that is not, yes, but some of that is the proprietary information that will be redacted. So there is more information on that that I think we'll be able to digest.
Okay. I think something that might be helpful, even if we cannot say, okay, like this was the number, I think to understand, like, this is what was considered in making these decisions, or like, these are some of the data points, might be helpful. I just feel like there's more clarity that's needed on how the predictions came about, how we're holding different, even if there's like a weighting on different factors that were weighted as we looked at this would be helpful. And then the last follow-up, I know Councilmember Aguirre had asked for almost like a graphic in terms of, you know, this is how much a school costs, this is how much a road costs, this is how much each of these different things costs. Will that be in the updated?
Yes, thank you. So that question, and I think one of the first ones, that combination of what does this project mean to a resident financially, particularly as it relates to our tax situation, particularly as it relates to how much things cost? How do we look at those things? There's a whole series of information that we've been putting together. We're almost finished with that, with our financial advisor and our finance director. So we'll be able to bring that forward rather quickly and try to do it in a way that everyone can understand, calculate what, as a resident, this is what I can expect, this is the types of things that this brings in terms of a potential ability to afford. And I think that's really important, and there are significant numbers.
No, that's all. I'm really excited. I'm glad my colleague made that suggestion. I think the pictures will be extremely helpful. And now my actual question, I realized it was just off comments. Ms. Landrum, you mentioned that kind of what happens next is the House bill would be potentially taken up by the Senate, and that there's still an opportunity. I know many of us have voiced concerns with the current state of the House bill and changes we'd want to see. Can you just kind of walk us through with a little more detail, like the legislative process in terms of, is there another next deadline by which some of that feedback needs to be incorporated? Yeah, how do we make sure that some of our concerns are addressed, and what is moving?
I will start by saying that this is not my area of expertise, Virginia legislative process, but the way that it has been described to us, and as we have seen other bills that we've been interested in over the years, is when a bill crosses from one body to the other, it does get reviewed and marked up, and it will get scheduled for a public meeting of that other body. And so in this instance, that would be the Senate body, and I assume it will be one of the committees, and there will be a lot of work that gets done before that gets scheduled. Part of what we do as a city is we have a staff person who is in Richmond and who works on our behalf during the session, and she very diligently is going to all of these committee meetings and following dockets and agendas, and knows how things are being reviewed and where we have access to input. We have other people working with us this session because we do have a large item that we are interested in, and so they will be continuously providing information to the city manager and myself, so that we are tracking those things and can weigh in when appropriate. You also just heard in your previous item that the city itself has a legislative agenda, and so that subcommittee will also be receiving feedback throughout the coming weeks. The session goes through March 9th, and so all of this will happen before March 9th.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pike.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all very much for being here. I appreciated at the last meeting, the very deep dive, about an hour and 40 minutes, that we did into the sort of financial questions of this proposal. And for those who are watching online who haven't watched that, the city put it up on their Vimeo account. You can watch the entire discussion where we deal with a lot of the questions regarding, what's the city's exposure, what are we investing in, what are we not investing in, what sort of money is Monumental putting in upfront versus what they're going to be paying out over the time that this project would potentially exist. So I thought that was a very useful discussion. I thank you all for being involved in that, and glad to have you here in person this time. And then the city council town hall on the 27th of January, I think, was also very good. It's also up and available online for any residents. If you want to see the questions the city council has, which I think is informing a lot of what y'all are bringing us today, as we're considering this deal. Regarding the elements that we're discussing tonight, I appreciated the release of the transportation report, which came after the city council town hall. As I've indicated, I think that the questions regarding transportation, how we're going to get people to and from the site, is where a lot of my thoughts and concerns sort of lay. And I feel that the presentations that we received do address a lot of the broad strokes. I'm looking forward I'm looking forward to the sort of more detailed data that we're going to get at the end of the month. I would hope that at that point, the council could come back and have a longer, more detailed conversation about the transportation elements with experts on that, because I think that is a real point of concern for the residents. And I would love to see information, not only on that five to six o'clock hour, but maybe the six to seven o'clock hour as well, which is another sort of pinch point time zone in transit in the city, as well as, I think, we're all very interested to see the cost breakdowns on the transportation improvements. And I didn't really have questions, just want to sort of state a couple of things that were on my mind as we look at this. And I hope that, I look forward to the session later in the month and learning more about the transportation project proposals, and then have some real substantive discussion about that afterward.
You, Councilmember Pike, Councilmember Bagley, Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and thanks, everybody, for being here and for the various presentations. I appreciate we're not doing like a deep dive on transportation, but I do have some questions and comments, if I can, for Mr. Donahue, I assume. Okay, so one of the things that is missing a little bit for me in the traffic analysis is the education. I'd like to see more of a discussion moving forward on how, if we're going to meet our 50% goal, it's one thing to like build out a metro station, to fund BRT, to disincentivize driving, it's another to teach people to not drive and to, so that, you know, they feel confident and comfortable with choosing a method that might not feel natural or their most common method. So I guess, like, to my colleagues, it's necessarily a question at the moment, it's a request, I guess. And if you have some information to share on that point, but I agree, the money and the infrastructure discussion is important, but just because you build it doesn't necessarily mean they will come in this situation. And so what I would love to see in the next level transportation analysis that maybe we're doing here locally, in our negotiations with Monumental about their ticket holder communication, is how do we begin? How do we use the five years potentially that we have, you know, the four and a half, five years before the first puck drops in Alexandria potentially, to educate people in PG County, Prince William, Montgomery, you know, DC, about the various ways to get here? Because I appreciate we could expand the metro station and we could, you know, buy buses, but if people want to just do the thing they know how to do, which is get in their car and drive, I understand that they're going to do that. So I would love to give Mr. Donahue a chance to respond, but I also don't want to put him on the spot if that's not something y'all are prepared to talk about tonight.
Nick, do you want to respond?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Sorry, I wasn't sure, being virtual, I couldn't see kind of the cadence of the room, so I didn't want to speak out of turn there. Thank you, Councilwoman Bagley, for that question. I agree completely with you about the point on education. Folks definitely will need to be aware of how all of that works. This is something that I know JBG and Monumental and others have been talking about. One of the things we've been working and talking with Monumental about is are there opportunities to provide incentives to people to, through kind of ticket sales, to consider using some of the parking at the Metro Rail stations further south along the corridor, so at Huntington, at Franconi, and some of those other lots, particularly with games starting kind of at the, you know, the end or in rush hours, those garages have spaces in them, looking at ways to do that. And I think your point that you're raising is one that's well-taken, and, you know, is something that we will continue to discuss. It is a very important issue.
I appreciate that because, for a host of reasons, I want us to get to that 50%. I want us to get below that 50%, ideally, because that's better for the environment, that's better for safety. I mean, you are safer on a bus, you are safer on the train, and certainly, you know, environmentally, it's a more sound choice. So to the extent we can incorporate that educational component into our plan, you know, our infrastructure plan, I think that's really important. I also wanted to, I found the analysis on the GW Parkway, and maybe it's just the nature of like the slides that I looked at was a little brief, or, you know, a little light. And I can appreciate, because I understand if you try to get from the Parkway to Route 1, it is tight, small, bumpy, it does everything it can to tell you, don't be here unless you have to be here. But how will people who are coming from Prince George's County, or coming from Prince William, Montgomery, you know, who aren't using DCA frequently, who don't make that traverse, which admittedly, like the report indicates, it has all sorts of traffic coming, it's small, it's slow, but if this is your first time coming to see the Caps and Alexandria, and, you know, you come down the Parkway, you might do that. So I understand the reference to like, we don't anticipate the Parkway, but I think I'd like to see that get a little more coverage and a little more analysis in the full transportation conversation. And then shifting away from transit, I'll take you guys off the hot seat for a second. I was wondering if we could, can we talk about Target? Can we talk about Target? Is, can you speak at all, and I'm sorry, your last name isn't on the screen anymore, and I don't.
Jackie Samarco.
Okay, yeah. Could you speak a bit to where Target fits into this plan at the moment?
Yeah, absolutely. Currently, we would be working with them to identify a new home for them, whether that is somewhere else on the site. But these are, as you know, the arena is a phased plan, so we would first look to build the arena and the adjacent buildings, and then look to reposition some of the areas with the retail. But the goal would be to find a home for them, and whether that is somewhere else on the property or within the immediate community and local portfolio, we would work to do that.
Thank you. I'm pleased to hear that. I think it's a vital resource for the community, and it would be great to find a home for them, you know, in the parcel if possible. And then the last comment is, we touched on a lot tonight, and as we talk about, and I don't know if this fits in financials or where exactly this fits in a next update, but we got a lot of questions at the town hall about jobs and the quality of those jobs and the nature of sort of labor agreements and that sort of thing. And so I appreciate tonight might not have been the night to update on that, but I think the community is keen to hear a little more detail on the quality and nature of jobs and potentially where we stand on any progress with the labor standards for the development.
Sure. I will just address, we, in the interest of time, we brought forward three speakers from each of the three sessions, but there were a number of other speakers that talked about a lot of these other topics. At last week's session, we had representatives from JBG Smith, Monumental, and Clark Construction, who is doing a number of large projects in the market, and all talked about the opportunities for jobs, employment opportunities from part-time to full-time, to retired, to apprenticeship, the quality, the protections for workers, et cetera. So a lot of that was covered by those parties on last week's call, and we do have more information that we will continue to roll out related to those opportunities.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And yeah, really, so I would direct people, so the date of that one was what, February 10th?
8th.
Is it the, yeah, it's last Thursday.
Yes, last Thursday.
Okay, so last Thursday, that would have been covered. All right, well, thank you very much, and I look forward to the next update.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions and comments, just to prepare you. First of all, when it comes to the stadium authority, I know that it's still a conversation that's ongoing, but I would hope that the preferences of the city and the city council will be expressly conveyed to the appropriate folks. For affordable housing, I completely echo my colleague and her comments around looking for as much variety as possible. You know, I remember when I first got to the city that typically, we were looking at affordable units at like 80% AMI, which, you know, frankly, yes, there's a need for that, but also not very affordable. Then we got to 60%, yes, space for that, but when we did the analysis, you know, really what we were looking at was 40% and below the area median income. So definitely something that we want to highlight, focus on. Also, some potential money from Richmond would be great, but we'll leave those conversations Transportation stuff. So I also agree with my colleague to my left here with educating. You know, I'm deeply involved in a lot of the transportation stuff, and I know that if I hop on the 36, I could cross the entire city and be at Atomic Yard. But most of my neighbors probably don't realize that. The 34 has, the Dash Route, 34 has pretty low ridership right now. If this proposal were to go through, I think that would change greatly. So again, people being aware of what the local routes are. I think also the routes in Arlington are going to be important for people to realize, especially if we're talking about folks parking in garages, not just in Alexandria, but also outside of the city. All of these things, of course, are issues that we've been hearing concerns from our residents. Side streets, I know it got brought up a little bit, don't want an answer right now, but just saying, hopefully you guys have some more information on this when you have the deeper dive. The two that come to mind immediately are Ridge Road, number one, and then number two is East West Glebe, as opposed to North South. Because when we talk about residential protections and protecting our neighborhoods, when you have that intersection or that interchange from the highway, we want to, if this were to go through, we would want all traffic to be directed around North South, because if they go down East West Glebe, now all of a sudden, they're coming into the community and creating issues that we don't necessarily want to have. So those two side streets are, I think, are very important. They've been brought up. If we can get an explanation too, as to why Fridays weren't incorporated, I know the initial thing is that, you know, commute is different now, but considering how conservative we are with a lot of our estimates and how deeply we go into the dives, when we talked about the financial, I mean, we literally said, these teams won't make the playoffs for this entire time, and this is what, you know, we would look at. So I would also like to see, what does this look like on a Friday night, too? And to not exclude that, and I think similarly, my colleague brought up, excuse me, brought up the five to six. I kind of know why, but a deeper dive and explanation into why are we just looking at five to six? Is that excluding the rest of the rush hour, or are we looking at five to six because it is literally when the most cars are on the road? And then expanding upon that, right? So we'd like to see some more information around there. If there's a way to compare the current metro station with the proposed changes to other arena or stadium-serving metro stations, so we could kind of get, we have a chart where we compared our deal to other deals across the country, so I think this would be a nice chart just to compare the station to some of the other stations that are serving Same thing with the number of trains that are coming through. I think that's a big deal, right? People talk about the capacity, two lines, blue and yellow. How many trains can we really get in and out realistically? I covered the parking lots a little bit already. Just a general comment, at some point, would like to see Womata, you know, looped into some of this conversation, because they are the operator. Granted, you know, it's not even a conversation if there's no deal, right? So we're still working along that process. But if we're going to have Womata as the operator, then they need to be looped in at some point. Blah, 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 blah. The concert hall. So we haven't really talked too much about the concert hall. I just want to throw it out there. But I was approached by some of our residents who think that the concert hall has the potential to actually be the biggest kind of draw for local residents and to for placemaking. So when we're having the conversations around the concert hall, I would really like the Arts Commission to be involved, to give some thoughts. Part of what was talked about in my meeting with them was, how do we create space for some of our smaller groups? Is there rehearsal space? Is there space for smaller concerts? Is there space for practice rooms, right? How can we really create a concert hall that is really unique and really beneficial to our community, especially for some of the smaller artists and art groups that we have?
Can I just, I'll respond to that real quickly. In our true commitment to engagement, we are simultaneously briefing city council and the Arts Commission tonight. So they are being briefed, or probably were briefed at this point, tonight on the project. We also did brief the Arts Alliance, and they, I think, are actually about to communicate some feedback to you. So very much engaged with that community and do see their engagement and the opportunity for the performing arts venue as critical.
Looping back to the education piece, forgot to mention this one. I was part of a conversation where someone who lives down in Ashland, which is just north of Richmond, was asking questions about this proposal and the potential for taking the train here. And they kind of got it immediately. They said, wait, I could drive from Ashland to Fredericksburg, which isn't too far, and then I could hop on the train and get up there? And it was like, yeah, that's part of the plan.
All right.
So.
I can't believe that train service.
So again, that education piece, I think, is great. I think that's pretty much it on my end, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Mr. Donahue, always good to see you, looking forward to having you up here in Alexandria in person at some point, too. So hope you're well.
Hey, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. I think one of the things, as we, if this bill moves forward and is voted on by the General Assembly, bringing this authority to life, I do think it would be helpful for our community if either somebody from city staff or the delegation kind of did a plain reading of the bill. I know a number of us know how to get to where it is on the website and read it through and kind of understand it, but I think this, just the general community member understanding what's been created, how it operates, I think would be necessary. Hopefully, somebody from the state can do that, since it's kind of in their jurisdiction, but I do think that would be beneficial. One of the other things that I think probably was covered under schools and housing and community benefits is kind of the full understanding of the ability of, whether it's the community or schools or partners, to access the campus when it's not in full event mode. I think that might be good to kind of be able to play out as we continue to discuss with Monumental. And then one thing I think would be, would be great is being able, and I think we've been already tracking some of the comments and things that have come in, but as, if this moves along, being able to track and talk about how this has changed based on community feedback and council feedback and all the different partners kind of pulling into this and how that's shaped this so that people can understand how this is being shaped, how their comments are being taken seriously, and concerns are brought up and talked about and pulled into this. I think that would be very, very useful as well. Thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions for our staff? All right, Ms. Landrum, do you have anything else for us tonight? Okay, we thank you all for all of the hard work. We know there's been a lot of long hours lately, and we appreciate all the community input that we received on this. Thank you, and we will continue to engage as we talked about at the front end there. So, all right.